What was that about Murphy?
We're here.
You know, you're amazing. You've had a lot to say until the microphones go on and then all of a sudden.
Well, there's some things you can't say.
You get things that just shrivel right up.
I know, it's something.
And then that's the end of it.
Like little peanuts.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. There's something.
Would you like a fireball?
No, stick it in your mouth. There's some things that you just can't say. And I didn't want to bring any of that stuff up.
Well, yeah, until you notice it's true. I mean, I wouldn't do that.
Then we're going down the wrong path and then you're gonna be on my ass. Well, we can't do that.
Who, me?
Yeah. No, no, so I'm not gonna talk about that.
This is the new mic.
The new mic?
The new mic? What's the new mic? I don't even know that name.
New mic. No restrictions, no.
Oh, I just.
No restrictions.
No, I don't know. I don't know that I would put that out there unless I knew for a fact that that was something that was said.
Yeah, you gotta, I mean, I don't, I don't care.
It's Paul's story.
Let it fly, Paul.
It's Paul's story.
No, that was just an article that somebody is saying that Murphy is telling everybody to take the streets. That's what he's telling everybody.
I didn't realize we had a problem in Connecticut that we had to do that.
Yeah, what's that got to do with?
Well, we do. We do have a problem because didn't they just, they just picked up?
What, what, what? Oh, you, oh, you, you got that microphone on today.
Yeah. This, I mean, they just picked up some kid in Waterbury or?
You need to, but they, you can mumble.
Yeah, they, they need to. They just picked up.
Your lip or something.
So I don't know. But what I seen was it was pretty peaceful when they demonstrated, which is good. I don't have a problem with anybody demonstrating.
You see the guy in the bridge that they picked off with the rubber bullet?
No.
It was up on, this on LA, there was two or three people on a bridge and I don't know if they were throwing rocks down or whatever they were doing. But one of the guards, I guess, fired off a rubber bullet dude that caught this dude in the head, dropped him like a, like a wet bag of potatoes. It was like, oh my God. Good thing it wasn't lead.
Apparently they know who the kid is that was throwing rocks.
Yeah, they got somebody.
They got somebody, yeah. But the looting is happening. Showed, with the looting.
It's incredible. These people, them people out there think it's okay. The politicians think it's okay.
I mean, I don't mind people demonstrating, but when you start destroying other people's property.
Right. Burning cars and.
Yeah, who's gonna pay for all that shit?
Enough enough.
Is it me or is it gonna be the residents of California? I mean, they're burning all the.
Well, residents, that's what they meant.
I mean, all look, all the residents of Cal are gonna pay for all those burnt cop cars for crying out loud. I mean, come on, give me a break. Don't those guys understand?
Yeah.
I mean, I think the one thing that kind of ticked me off was, I don't care if you demonstrate, but they were burning the American flag and running around with the Mexican flag. This is US, not Mexico. So that's the part that kind of ticks me off. What are you gonna do?
It's unfortunate what's happening in, in LA, obviously.
Yeah. Yeah. I think the mayor told them, you better not pull that crap here. You wanna demonstrate, go right ahead, but just don't start destroying property.
Peaceful, peaceful demonstrations.
It's not gonna stop people. If they're gonna do it, they're gonna do it.
That's right. But they'll pay the price.
They're into it.
Yeah. You know, that was my fear all along that Trump got elected, we were gonna go right back to where we were last time with all these friggin demonstrations going on. And, you know, starting to prove right. You know, that was my fear that they got elected. Oh, well.
So there's a lot of stuff going on in the national scene. A lot of the stuff that, you know, we don't.
We're not that close to it.
You think a lot of it is, um, just to get you to take you, and they always say that these are, there are things that just to take your mind off of what's really going on. Or is that really the deception? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
They, they don't want you to look at this, but they do want you to look at this.
Well, the predictions were made when he got reelected that, you know, he was quote unquote, gonna take the country back. And part of that was gonna involve the military.
Right.
I mean, that was stated almost from day one. And, you know, here we are. Everything that everybody thought was just chatter is happened and is happening.
But is some of this in California politically, is this more Trump versus Gavin Newsom?
Possibly.
No, I don't know. I think, I think Trump doesn't wanna see his country get destroyed.
Could be. I, I don't know. I mean, I'm surprised the people of California.
He's in a very peculiar predicament.
Yeah.
Gavin Newsom.
Yeah, if he wants to run for president.
Well, here's the thing. People forget. I mean, look what they did. Look at all those houses that burned down. Why did that happen?
What have they done since then? Nothing.
I mean, look at all this house. They all burned down. Big million, millions and millions of dollars worth of houses burnt down because of his lack of leadership.
Billions, oh yeah, billions.
Yeah, his lack of leadership. Now he's a friggin hero.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, now he's a hero.
So that just shows you how people forget.
You got that burned wasteland up there now, but he's a hero because of this.
Yeah, he's a big hero now.
Where's people's morals? I don't know.
And, and her, and, and look how they were, during the fires, they were destroying the mayor. I mean, they got rid of the fire chief because, you know, now she stayed in, you know.
And they still don't have, they still don't have water.
Yeah, because she wasn't around. And now she's a friggin hero.
Yeah.
I mean, that just shows you how people forget what they did prior and they just go on to the next thing. So, I don't know.
So a lot, a lot of things going on in town. Not just, just, you know, that's California, that's world news and.
That's true. A lot of things going on.
That's the, that's the left coast, we're, we're the east coast. So, um, that's probably one of the biggest things that are going on right now around the country, isn't it?
I think so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
I mean, it kind of took the peace talks off to the side, you know, I'm saying.
Yeah, you don't hear much about that right now.
They talk about that, then they, oh, by the way, Trump and, and Z are, she or we or whatever his name is.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't know. Is it Z?
Z.
President Z?
Xi. Z.
Xi.
Whatever it is, yeah.
Xi, Xi, Xi. I don't know. But anyway, apparently day two and three, I guess, have gone famously, so. And it's all gonna end and who's gonna buy TikTok? And I don't think I did. I don't think anybody cares.
No, I don't think so.
Because that's coming up again. The next TikTok ban, which I think is coming up in about 10 days.
Oh, they'll, they'll.
Wait, here?
They'll push it down the road like you do everything else.
June 19th.
Everybody pushes.
Well, there's been two that have been extended.
Yeah. That's, that's, that's the one thing that politicians do. They're pretty good kickers because they always kick the can down the road. Not only federally, but locally. They kick the can down the road. A lot of stuff around here too.
That's what it's always been, Paul. That's what it's always been. It's, hasn't changed.
I mean.
A lot of us are just seeing it now. You know what I mean? A lot of people are just seeing it now. They didn't see it 30 years ago. It's the same stuff.
I mean, some of the stuff that came up yesterday and it bothers me because people are given this information, but they don't read it. I mean, if you're, you're in a position and you're told that something's gonna change, your responsibility as a leader is to take the information and read it. So you can make the right decision. But every time you go, I didn't have a chance to look at this. I didn't have a chance to look. Well, what the hell is your position? You're supposed to look at this. Just like some of the letters we've written from public health and safety. They don't read them. What's this all about?
You hear a lot of that at different meetings.
Yeah.
And, you know, yeah, I haven't had a chance to read it yet. I haven't had a chance. You've had it for a month. How come you haven't had a chance to read it?
I mean, if you were in a private sector and you were working and you didn't read with your boss, that you?
And you came back to a follow-up meeting, you'd have a problem.
You'd have a problem.
You hear it a lot.
Yeah, you do.
So why don't you jump in there and take care of that problem?
I can't take care of that problem.
Why?
I can't make them read it.
But you could run for office.
No, too old. Too old.
I don't think there's an age limit on town politics.
There's, there's no age limit. It's, it's not necessary.
Is if, if you've got a lot to say, which is fine, then it, somebody told me once. Um, 10 years ago, I was like, maybe I should run for Board of Selectmen. And I quickly changed that in a hurry. I wasn't, I don't think I was really ever serious, but somebody said, he said, don't run unless you know there's something that you can do better. Or you have something to add that the current administration doesn't have.
And that's, that's, that is a problem.
So I'm, I'm like, oh, yeah, I, I wouldn't know.
Yeah, well.
For you, you seem to have answers.
Well, not gonna have answers. I think it's just common sense.
Because if you run and you happen to get on the Board of Selectmen, but some of the remaining, some of the ones that are on there now managed to get on too. What is it gonna, is it gonna be a head butting the whole time? They're gonna, they're gonna fight you tooth and nail for what you want because it's not how it's been done? You know, I mean.
Run with one of your buddies?
Will they change? I don't know. You know, I mean, that's the thing.
Yeah.
It's hard to say. You should be working together for the common goal of everybody, but, you know, if they're fixed in their ways, I mean, maybe that doesn't happen and you can't change it. It's a tough call.
So, so last night, like one of the things I was talking about, like I'm, here I am saying, oh, Paul, you know, I mean, I'm like serious, but not.
He's trying to, he's trying to page you, Paul.
Right, yeah. But, but the question is, there is something that was said last night that made me kind of think, well, maybe, maybe this is what's happening. Is during public, well, there's gonna be so many people are gonna be mad at me that I never thought we met. But it was during public forum last night of the Board of Selectmen meeting, someone said that basically, you know, there are people that don't like what's going on right now. And then there's a ground swell of, like, or a certain group that seems to be growing and throwing people or wanting to throw people over.
I think the word last night was, is a, a little clique going on.
Well.
Call it what you want.
It kind of is.
Call it what you want.
You know what I mean? I mean, there's, there's, there, there is a group that, and I'm not gonna say who or whatever.
They've been paying attention.
But they've been, they've been, there's a group that is kind of like storming town hall, so to speak. And you can, you can believe them, or you may not. You know, that's, that's totally up to you. But I gotta be honest with you. It's, to me, it's the first time I've ever seen anything quite like this, where you have just a, you know, a group of people, you know, that are all of a sudden, it's like, you know, marching, you know, like the battering ram.
No, it's not me. Cause if that's the first I heard of it, cause.
Your wife said group. Cheryl said group.
Yeah. Well, you know, a lot of, there are some people that are unhappy with what's going on in town. I mean, I think a lot of people want to see the town go forward and we really haven't been going forward. We're kind of like stuck in limbo here and I think that's what's happening.
Why don't you put the other one on, Paul? Cause that one's not working for you.
I don't know, I don't know who's part of the group. I really don't care who's part of the group.
Okay. You, you, you speak very low and with the microphone being down here. Maybe put that on backwards anyway yourself.
So it's not me.
Yeah, see now you're like, go ahead.
Oh.
Just turn the other one.
Boomin.
That's all. Yeah, I mean.
Black five is boomin.
Boomin, huh? Yeah, I really don't. It's not me, so.
It doesn't have to be you to make the comment or to.
No, I can, but I make the comment. I mean, I, I used to go to a lot of the meetings and I think what turned me off was got chopped up at the knees and a couple of things. And from that day forward, I swore I would never go to another meeting. And I don't go. For that reason. Now, maybe in the future, maybe.
Never say never. You just said you wouldn't. Now you're saying in the future.
Well, in the future.
Never say never.
If things change, maybe I would, but right now, that was my feeling and that's why I stopped going to anything. Yeah.
Well, unfortunately, there's a lot of people that do that. And, you know, if you don't make your voice heard, then. I don't know.
Mary Beth says, uh, as I always say, in grizzled, you can't have honest conversation.
Sure you can. You just get called out on it, that's all.
Well, unfortunately, defensive is, is the way of life today. Everybody's defensive, you know? You say something, somebody's gonna be on your ass for saying that.
You know, the, the biggest problem is, and, and it happens almost monthly now, is like this show today. I'm real certain that it's being paid attention to.
It always is.
Yeah. And then when you go to a selectmen's meeting, one of the agenda items is social media issues. And guess what's on there? As we all know, we've been there before.
We were on there last night.
Well, well.
How, how, how was this show?
You weren't, but it, but it has been.
No, no, you're right. It has been.
Last night was stuff that took place on Facebook, right? I mean, which they have no control over. They have no say over. I mean, it is what it is. I mean, but do you, do you take people and call them out in public on that? No, I think not.
What I'm saying is that last night's meeting, there was nothing about us.
No.
No.
But it was.
It was a nice sigh of relief.
There was about some Facebook posts and comments. And, you know, it got, it turned into, it turned into a little bit more than just one or two people. It was, plenty of people spoke. And that's fine, but do you, do you take that to a, a town meeting and, and make that public? I mean, listen, there's people in that room that were not on Facebook, didn't know, wouldn't have cared, but now they're gonna have an opinion about it. You know, I just don't get it. For the people that complain on Facebook all the time about the budget, blah, 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 blah. It's too high, too high. But then they don't go vote. You know what I mean? So what's your point? I don't get it.
Yeah. I think people complain because they wanna complain.
Of course.
And I, a lot of those people, a lot of those people who probably complained, probably didn't even look at the details and what the hell was in the budget.
Yeah.
The devil's in the details.
Yeah, and unfortunately, yeah.
This whole social media thing with the, on an agenda at a selectmen's meeting, it just should be removed. It's not pertinent to any, there's nothing they can do about it. They, they can discuss it all they want, but, I mean, it just holds no value.
Well, what, what I was speaking to was a public comment. I wasn't talking about anything that the board said. This was Dave View, a resident, you know, that's, you know, that's something that he had said.
Oh, I, I didn't hear what he had said, so.
I mean, the better and different. I mean, he's right. There is a ground swell of a certain group.
Oh, oh, I didn't, I didn't know that.
Absolutely. You can't deny that.
No, I can't deny that. There's a lot of people that are not happy. Yeah.
Okay, it happened at the national.
I, I even, I even texted Tina and I said, I, I said, for the first time in my life, I said, I agree with something Dave you said. It's true. There, there is a, there is a certain group of folks. It's, it would be inappropriate for me to sit here and say who they are or why they are or why they're doing what they're doing. It's not, it's not a personal thing, so it's, it's a matter. But there is. Would you agree?
Yeah, there is a, I guess there is a group, yeah. Yeah. I mean, I think there's probably just people looking out to make sure things are being done right.
I, I'm not saying yes, no, I'm not being indifferent. I'm just, I, why I'm being indifferent, it's just, there is, you know, Dave was right, you know, some people like that, some people don't. Either you're gonna follow or get off the wagon.
Yeah. Some people have different opinions on things. Simple.
Yeah. I mean, if you went to these meetings and nothing was said, then you'd say, what the hell's going on? Nobody's got any comments. But people are speaking out, which is, which is a good thing.
It's one-sided at that point.
Yeah, but people should be looking at it and say, you know, is it criticism? Is it we doing things right? We doing things wrong? You think you'd make an adjustment if you're doing things wrong, but I don't know.
Speaking of social media though.
Yeah.
I think I finally have bullied Wayne Mailen into getting.
Yes.
A Facebook page.
Yes. I, I had to, I actually had to text him yesterday when I got that request. I says, dude, is this really you? And he laughed. He goes, are you sitting down? He says, yep, it's me.
Well, I just, I, I just think if anybody is a public figure or, or has desire to be a public figure.
You gotta be reachable.
Exactly. So, um, I think personally, I think that was very important, you know, from the cheap seats over here, that he did that. You know, depending on which way he wants his, his public career to go. So, but you just said it, reachable.
Yeah. You have to be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so there was a lot of jabs last night at the Board of Selectmen meeting. Some were very, almost subliminal. Uh, but one, one of the, one of the things, and we're gonna get to the Board of Education in a bit.
But, uh, but right now we're kind of, kind of have our feet in the mud, you know, over at the, the Board of Selectmen meeting. And one thing I will say is, you know, you're right. When they say they're not watching, they are freaking watching. Because it's, it's wild how they all know.
Yeah.
You know, what we say on this show, you know, it's a show. It's a show. It's what we do.
Well, we know that for sure.
Maybe we'll piss you off.
We know that some people watch it, some people get pissed off at it, take it to a next level, so.
Some people got hit, pissed off at Geraldo.
Taking it, taking it personally, whatever. I mean, it's, it's not that. It's just general observations. And granted, you know, we played the true or false game one night. They didn't like that, you know?
We maybe, Wayne could have been closer to the truth than we really know. Since the, since St. Mary's is not gonna be built out in apartments, now maybe it will really be a parking garage.
You never know. You never know. We certainly need the parking space, that's for sure.
I would ask the first selectman, hurry up. No, don't do it then. No, 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 then it will be called. What, what, what were we called?
Irresponsible.
Irresponsible, playing a game.
I wasn't part of that, so I don't know.
Oh my God, Paul. Stop it. Stop hiding behind shit. Stop hiding. Stop hiding.
I'm not hiding. I'm right, I'm right in front of you. That happened the other day. I wasn't here.
Let's talk about something you were there for. So that way you can't back down. What were you there for? What, what, what were some things you were there for?
Well, I was here when I got called up on, uh.
Civil War.
The letter.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there was, it was that. Yeah.
Speaking of the EDC, they're having their election of officers.
Yeah.
And what, we all got the agenda for the EDC and there's like really nothing on it, except for election of officers and then one other.
Yeah, one new one.
It's new, whatever it is, new.
Yeah, but the things that are normally on there are not there.
Gone.
So I kind of, I kind of wonder if that was done on purpose because, uh, there may or may not be a new EDC grand puba.
I don't know.
Be, you know, elected into that chairman, chairwoman's position.
Hard to say.
So it would be up to that person to craft a new agenda, correct?
So if, if you change chairmans, does the EDC director's position go away?
Uh, absolutely. I don't think it's ever there.
It is.
Is, is it there?
He wears two hats.
Okay, okay, okay. Where does it say that we have an EDC director?
There is a.
Other than, I'm the EDC director.
No, there is a piece of paper.
There is a piece of paper.
Skolczek, Kevin Skolczek had put in the file back when he did it and Tina produced it. So there is an EDC director, unpaid.
Yeah.
But what's the difference between that and the chairman? I don't know. So if the chairman changes, does the director go away?
That's something you have to go to the ethics, I mean, not the ethics board, but the ordinance board.
I don't even know if a director's in the ordinance, so I don't know how that would.
So if there's no ordinance governing it, how is it even possible?
Well, the ordinance is up for review.
All the ordinance is gonna be reviewed.
It's up for review because the one thing that has to be done is that director position, like you said, and there's no alternates.
Yeah.
Which is, should be alternates on it and there isn't any. So that has to be changed. But the way, the way ordinance is a treat around here, it'll probably take five years for it to get approved anyway.
But speaking of Skolczek, I speak well of the guy. I think, you know, he was a very good first selectman and had a, uh, uh, one hell of a following. Snubbed me.
Really?
Well, he snubbed me at the breakfast place.
We can.
Yep. Just snubbed me.
Who knows?
Maybe I'm not prayed up. I don't know.
But yeah, that'll be, the, the EDC meeting, I think is gonna be interesting because they did talk about the non-disclosure agreements last night at the selectmen's meeting.
Oh, they did.
And they're gonna get them reviewed and get them over to the EDC for the next meeting. And now it's not, if you want to sign one, you will be required to sign one to be on that committee. So there is no option.
And that was one thing that, that, um, Rich Grabowski made sure was on there because.
I didn't know who drove that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He's, he's, he's the one that brought it up about being required. And then Martin McKinney said something that they need to sign, or they made the motion or whatever, that, you know, every member is, you know, uh, needs to. And then Rich jumped in and said, no, be quiet.
Sure.
And I don't think that's a bad thing. I, I don't think that's a bad thing at all. You know, I mean, if you guys have private information, you know, to, you know, that are gonna go ahead, that's gonna go ahead.
Yeah, you're right.
Well, there was one member, obviously, that had said in the beginning that he was not in favor of, of the NDA, but then has changed his mind. I don't know the city would, you know, willingly sign it, but he changed his mind about it. But now he's, you know, there's no choice. You, you wanna stay on the committee, you have to sign it.
I don't, I don't think it's a bad thing.
No.
I honestly don't.
Listen, the committee needs to work together and you can't work together when you can't talk.
Correct. Correct. Now, you're still on the EDC, correct?
Yeah.
Who's on? You, Tom Giard, Jim Barney.
Me and Kathy Wassler.
Oh, that's right. Okay. I forgot you were on the, you're on the EDC?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Got a letter.
Is it safe to visit the dentist?
Whoa, 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 what the heck happened there?
Oh, boy.
We're just putting up pictures of, uh, a lot of our, uh, sponsors and people that support us here at SNSN. Um, another thing that's very, very important right now, I feel, is, and I know we're jumping into something else, but, uh, the fact that Dodd Stadium may be going away, well, I wanna talk about that a little bit later.
Yeah, I haven't followed that.
Yeah, so, um, what can be done, what can't be done, we'll see what happens.
Maybe they can put it in a parking garage.
They don't need it.
They got one that's underused now, you kidding me?
They don't need it.
Jesus.
Um, yeah, you're right, it is very under.
The one that falls out.
Yes, yes, yes.
Seat bus terminal, that's about all it is.
Uh, so, let's, let's, I think we've talked about EDC and Board of Selectmen enough, you know, for, for today. Um, I think the, the real big thing is the, uh, um, the Board of Education. You know, because the budget is bifurcated, right? One made it and one didn't.
Hmm.
Um, so I think, uh, we should talk about that. Uh, there was a meeting last night at, uh, Brazil Middle School. And, uh, we'll get into that in a second right here on SNSN.
Today's program is being brought to you by the Burns Agency in Dayville and Norwich. Home, auto, life insurance, all from a family-owned agency since nineteen thirty-two. Call eight six zero seven seven four eight five four nine, or find them on the web at burnsagency.com and find out why you'll buy better at Burns. The Burns Agency, a hub international company. Strain Family Motors on Route Twelve Lisbon. Quality used cars like the SNSN Strain Family Motors mobile that you will see at all SNSN sports events. Oil changes, remote car starters, all available and more in their service department. And if you really wanna turn up the excitement, rent a Polaris slingshot for the day and live it up. All available at Strain Family Motors, Route Twelve in Lisbon.
All right, we're back. And, um, so, uh, we.
Life is full of choices. At Do It.
I keep hitting the wrong buttons, I'm just sorry about that, guys. Um, but I do keep hitting the wrong button. Um, all right, so let's, let's, let's jump into Dodd Stadium real quick. Dodd Stadium is, uh, been thirty plus years, started with the Norwich Navigators.
Yankees.
Yep, which was the double A affiliate of the New York Yankees. Uh, then, uh, moved into, after the Yankees moved their double A affiliate to New Jersey. Uh, they brought in another double A affiliate, the Connecticut Defenders. Uh, which was an affiliate of the San Francisco Giants.
Oh, okay, I thought it was the Tigers, but okay, I'm wrong.
Well, that was next.
Oh.
After that was the CT Tigers, which was a, uh, low A.
They Detroit.
It's gone.
Yeah.
That league is gone. Uh, so basically, they were affiliated, uh, with the, uh, Detroit Tigers. Um, they have low A, and there's another form of it, and there's A, double A, triple A, and then major leagues. The, the, one of the reasons why they got rid of that entire league was because a very, very small percentage of players um, that hit was in the, uh, low A short season league, never made it to even double A.
Gotcha.
So they got rid of the entire league, it was a cost-saving measure, and, um, it was like, you know, nothing against the kids, but, you know, they're, they're only going so far, and if, you know, of course, you know, people, um, you know, people are looking, you know, for baseball.
Right.
But now with the C Unicorns. I hear, I get feedback on, boy, that name is stupid.
Yeah, I mean, it's no different than the stupid yard go name, so we'll see.
I think it's kinda cool, I think it's kinda neat. It's a lot of thing, you know, like, you know, the crowd moves like this and they get a run or they go like this.
Red Sox and the White Sox and the Yankees, it's just like, break it up a little bit.
It really all started with the Atlanta Braves, you know, when they were doing the tomahawk.
Yeah, break it up a little bit, right?
You know, but of course, that's not, uh, appropriate to talk about.
Yeah.
Uh, Justin says, uh, when the stadium, if the stadium goes away, can I get my video switcher back? Uh, the answer to that is, you know. Sorry. Possession's nine tenths of the law, Justin, that's all I can say. Of course, Canada's yours.
I thought, um, that the stadium, wasn't that a question on the, the, their budget voting or whatever, part of the budget process or no?
I don't know if it was, it was a question, but they, there was a couple of, uh, uh, special meetings. About Dodd Stadium, stuff like that, whether they should or shouldn't, for, so for where it sits, right? There are some that want to, uh, on the Northtown Council, and some that are on the fence, and then some that don't. So it's really which way, um, you know, is everyone, you know, going to, or how, how is it gonna, gonna go ahead and end? Uh, we have had a groundswell of, uh, of, of folks, uh, that have, have joined in with us to, to go ahead and, um, you know, try to start a little bit of a campaign, uh, to save Dodd Stadium. You know, or at least look at it as, you know, there's a hashtag save Dodd. If, if, if Dodd Stadium goes away, and we'll get into this more and more as time goes on, but what, what is there to do really in Norwich?
People will complain.
Surrounding areas, you know, really that, you know, is really good family fun, that the whole family can go out and have a good time.
And it's cheap, it's affordable.
For an affordable time, yeah.
If it goes away, people will complain that there's nothing to do, but if it stays, nobody's gonna support it. You watch, that's what'll happen. Well, everybody'd be happy that it stayed, but.
Can they change, like, a soccer, a soccer league?
A soccer? I don't know.
I mean, soccer seems to be.
They're talking about tearing it down and putting housing in there.
Yeah.
See, that'd be a shame.
Well.
So, yeah, that would be a shame.
It would be a damn shame.
That's a shame, but, uh, beautiful park.
Uh, the other thing is, I hear is that, uh, oh, well, they're not affiliated with Major League Baseball anymore, so what's the use? What's the use? And this is where I kinda laugh and chuckle a little bit. Because I think a lot of people that are not familiar with these types of leagues, like this is the Futures College Baseball League, the FCBL, that's in there, that the Navigators, uh, no, excuse me, the, uh, C Unicorns are a part of. These kids do make it. There's more kids that make it out of, out of these guys than they would have at a low A single, short season. So right now, there's, like, in the major leagues right now, there's a kid by the name of Ben Rice. He's the leadoff hitter for the New York Yankees. Starter. He's a future league, he's a futures league kid. Played for the Worcester Bravehearts. Louis Guerrero, who pitches for the Boston Red Sox right now. Actually, it has a one point five ERA, you know, which is very good.
Decent, yeah.
Right? Played for the Brockton Rocks, futures league kid. So, it's there, you know, I mean, the, the, these kids get scouted. Last year, the All-Star Game for the Futures League was at Dodd Stadium. A, the place was packed, B, there were scouts everywhere. I was running a camera right outside the broadcast booth, and there had to be, uh, not even kidding, thirty scouts in front of me, all with radar guns. You know, tagging the pitcher, because they're scouting them, and why? Because they wanna see if it's somebody they may wanna sign for their major league team.
Yeah.
So, so there you go.
Unfortunately, we're in eastern Connecticut, so we're not getting any support from the state.
Right, it's not that little sandlot field that everybody thinks it is, it does draw our attention.
I mean, look what they do with the yard goats up there, they glorify those people. They had a stadium in New Britain, if you remember, right? Glorified them. There's a small club down here trying to make it, you think the state would help out? Nope, they don't give a damn because.
Well, before you get into New Britain, um, which the New Britain, uh, Rock Cats.
Rock Cats, that's right.
Were same as the, um, Norwich Navigators, they were a double A team, you know, for Major League Baseball, they were affiliated with the Twins.
Right.
Yeah, where do you think the, the New Britain team is now?
I don't know, they're gone, right?
No, no, they're not, Paul.
They're not?
No.
Really?
They're in the Futures League.
Oh, there you go.
The Britain Bees.
Wow.
They're in the Futures League. Matter of fact, uh, tonight will be the, uh, Unicorns against the New Britain Bees.
Oh, there you go.
Live on. Game time, six thirty. Uh, I think the other thing is, is people say that, you know, there, there's quality of baseball is not there, and that's not true. If, if you go to a game, if you just.
You were there.
I was in a Norwich, Connecticut forum, right, and I was talking about it, you know, and one guy said, well, it's my money. I'm not gonna go see this kind of baseball with this kind of stupid name of a team. And I'm like, so, so you're not gonna, you're not gonna go see your local team because you don't like their name? So I don't know how much sense that makes to me. Um, but, um, I'll buy you a ticket. No, you wouldn't go. Wouldn't go, really, and it turned out, it had nothing to do with anything.
Wow.
He just didn't wanna go.
Yeah. I, I don't know really what.
Wouldn't even take a free ticket, I, I said, I'll buy, I'll, I'll give you four tickets to go. Afraid to have fun.
I mean, is, has baseball really gone down the tubes? Even the big leagues, think about it, I mean.
I don't know, ask Juan Soto, he's making fifty million a year, is it?
That's not, that's not down the crapper to me, that's for sure.
I, I don't, I don't think so.
No.
Not at all. I think you get complaints, you know, that baseball games are too long. You know, when they, they've tried to make ways, you know, and, and different rules, you know, to speed the game up, like.
Pitch clock.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, because they can get boring halfway through the bell.
I liked watching the game, but several years ago, it was so bad, I mean, it was an afternoon to watch one game, you know, just the batter would get up there, he'd be all stretched out and good, and get, and then roll time, step back, pull his pants up, or it's, come on, you're in there to, you're there to play baseball, not how you look, I mean, you should have got out there and been ready to swing the bat when you went up into that batter's box.
Anyway, we, we, we would hope that you would jump in, into the hashtag of save Dodd and, uh, uh, join the revolution. Uh, right now, you see a graphic on the screen, Rubino's Full Circle, established nineteen fifty-nine, the reason why I put that up there, other than they a sporters here at SNSN, they're having a benefit of, uh, event, uh, on the twentieth, I believe.
Yep.
Twentieth, it's gonna be from what, twelve to six?
That's what I heard last night.
Six or something like that.
That's what I, I heard something, they were, I don't think they were real specific on the hours, but they did talk about it.
Yeah, yeah, they weren't, I don't think they were positive, I, but anyway, it's, it's for the Kevin Babcock.
Matt Babcock.
Oh, my God, Matt Babcock.
Foundation.
Foundation, and it's, uh, for scholarship, I believe, right?
Yes.
Kevin's his father, who is, you know, of course, this is very important to you.
Oh, yeah. They, uh, they shutting down, they agreed to shut down Oakville Road back there.
Yeah.
To, um, to make that all happen, and it should be a good time.
Kevin was actually on my mind, so that's why I said, said Kevin. And, uh, and I think there, because I believe one year anniversary.
That was around Christmas time, because he was working at the Christmas tree farm over in Preston.
I saw a post last night, I saw a post last night.
It's a little bit, it's a little bit more than that now.
Probably all over the place, but.
Yeah.
It's, it's, no matter how you look at it, it's still very, very sad, and they're, they're, uh, uh, keeping his name alive, you know, with, uh, this scholarship and many other things, too, so. June twentieth, that's at, uh, Rubino's Full Circle on Route One Thirty-Eight.
Yep.
In. What's this thing? Oh, yeah, it's not my point. He's only, he's only a world champion here in Connecticut, June City.
Got some, got some rec, records, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah, five.
Yep.
Kid's strong.
He likes to eat meat.
I pick things up, I put things down.
Yeah. Well, that's gone. I'm just going through the old, uh, the old stuff. All right, are you, you got somewhere to go?
No.
Are you? At least Paul doesn't take, uh, personal calls anymore on, on, uh, on the show. He was doing that for a second. Oh, Dean says, uh, see, oh, yeah, see, nobody listens, right? But Dean just said June, June twenty-second.
Yep.
So I, but last night, I thought they said the twentieth in the meeting. Anyway, we got the right, it's June twenty-second. Hey, Dean, what's up? All right, apparently, I, as much as I, I prepared for what I thought I knew last night, but apparently I don't know squat. God.
Yeah, because the twentieth would have been a Friday.
Okay. Either way, great location to have it. Um, Rubino's Full Circle, established nineteen fifty-nine.
Ice cream.
Get a full scoop.
Ice cream, it's got soft serve now, too.
What?
Yeah.
I, that, that I did not know.
Yep, it's on the side by the trailer, soft serve.
All right, so let's, uh, let's get into, uh, the budget. Town budget passed, okay. Uh, capital budget, of course, you know, we know it's part of the town budget, it's passed, that's, and the Board of Education had some, some items in the capital budget that passed, so they didn't even have to speak to any of that. However, the, uh, the education budget, um, did not pass. And it was, uh, I think Mr. McKenna, superintendent of schools, spoke to that, saying it was about sixty votes.
Yeah.
Right around there, that they were behind. And one, one of the things that was noted, uh, at last night's meeting was last year's referendum, it were a little over, what, four hundred and forty?
Four seventy, I think.
Four seventy. You know, votes.
Hmm, total.
This year was just under nine hundred.
Seven ninety-two.
Seven ninety-two, okay, it's just under nine.
Just under. Yeah.
I'm not math.
It was almost double.
I'm obviously not mathing today.
The sad part is, though, it's only seven and a half percent of the registered voters, uh, which is sad.
But it's probably three percent more than it was last year.
Last time, of course.
So, I guess the question I, I have for you gentlemen here, the influx of people that came out to go ahead and vote, were they mad? Were they upset voters? That, I mean, here's, here's the big difference in this year and last year. The education budget didn't pass, and there were a lot more voters this year than last year.
Yeah, but there weren't as many voters. It didn't fail by as many votes as the increase in number of voters would have dictated, it only failed by sixty votes. And there was four hundred plus five, you know, three, almost four hundred people more that came out and voted. So it's, it's hard to put them numbers together and say, remember the question that used to be on the ballot, was it too high or too low?
That's another thing, too.
You know, so really, what was it? I don't know.
Yeah, well, you gotta take.
Why, why did it fail?
You gotta think that people were complaining because it probably was too high.
Well, that's.
And, and, well.
Nobody's ever gonna go on.
There was, and that's one of the things that Jennifer Norman brought up last night during the meeting, was, and she said, you know, should there be a, a question, you know, is the budget too high or too low?
It used to be.
Been on there before.
Yep.
It was not on there this year, I don't know the reason.
Correct.
Or whatever, but I think, I, I do have a couple of clips from last night.
Did that become part of the ballot, that time, that year, that we had five referendums? And nobody could figure out, there was a too high or too low, and I think it ended up, it was right around that time that.
They said it was too low.
That, yeah, that that question came about, right?
Yeah. And now this was, now, now Sean McKenna has had nine, been here nine years, this is the first education budget that has not passed. So, here's, uh, here, here's the question by, from Jen Norman last night at the, um, Board of Education meeting.
So I would just say, in your time here, and I think this is the first referendum we have in past, a budget.
That is correct.
Yeah, so it was a bit of a surprise. Um, the other piece of that is, before your time here, the, the town did actually bifurcate the referendum questions and added too high or too low with the attempt to add money back in. And that's what bifurcated our budget. Um, and then that's where we've been ever since, and I often wonder if we should try to stick the budget back together. Um, if that would have some positives for us, so we're not pitted against the town budget, because they're not comparable, I mean, we're the largest employer in town, and they're this big. So I just wonder about the structures of how we vote on things, and if there's a way we could work to have some questions added, to have clarity around what the taxpayers would like to see happen.
So what, 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 uh, Jennifer Norman was saying was, you know, should there be a question on the budget? Uh, is the budget too high or the budget too low, basically?
It's happened before.
Right. You, Paul. You, Paul, do you think that is something that would be valuable?
I think so. Because it's still can pass, even people say it's too high, too low, as long as it passes. The, the, the questions being answered though are meaningless because it passed, you know? But I think this budget, the education budget, my guess is because of the economy. You got people struggling with the electric. Let's face it, the majority of people who live in Griswold are on every source. And their bills are ridiculous, okay? You got food that's costing you up the ass, you know, gas has come down somewhat. Got all these expenditures that people have to pay out of their pocket. You know, they can't afford much more because they're not getting any raises, okay? You know, so.
I went to the grocery store the other day. I walked out literally with three brown paper bags. And you know, you don't put much in them bags these days because they're garbage, they fall apart. I bought two things at the deli counter and it wasn't even full pounds of each one and it was a hundred and ten dollars.
There you go. I, I think that's the problem, isn't it? Everything is so expensive today.
It was like a hundred and ten dollars.
Yeah, you can't get blood out of a turtle. Let's face it. You know, and I think that's the reason why people.
You know, I'm probably middle of the road. There's people that, you know, afford things better than I do and there's people that can't, you know, I mean, I'm afraid to say it, but there's probably a lot of people that are on the lower side of things. You know, it's killing them. I get that.
So, uh, what Mary Beth just, uh, said, uh, and for those of you who do not know, Mary Beth is, the Mary Beth Malley is the uh, educa, uh, the Board of Education Chairwoman. Now, Mary Beth, maybe I, I don't know if I have clarity on this. She said, people were very confused when twelve years ago we had those questions were added. Now, are you saying that? People were confused by those questions when they were added? I don't know. I, I want to make sure I know what she's saying before, you know, I go forth or.
Well, questions on ballots are confusing to people because look at the one we have with the marijuana thing, right? That people got so confused, they thought it was the opposite.
Right. It's the way they worded it. Right. I remember that.
Yeah. So, you know, you gotta write these questions in baby format, you know? My name is Dick, Dick and James, that's my dog Spot.
My first book, man.
People don't read. It's obvious. People do not read what's in front of them.
You're not gonna get an argument for me. You're not gonna get an argument for me.
It's, I don't know. I, my, my guess is if they go in and they go in higher, I wouldn't go in higher if I were them.
Well, that's you, Paul.
No.
You're, 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 you're pinching rubles. I mean.
I'm not pitching rules, but they go in.
Okay, yeah, okay. There, there we go. Mary Beth said yes. She goes, I had, I had people calling me as they had no clue, uh, how to vote to support or question, I guess.
You had to vote no to vote yes.
Yeah, 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 it's weird.
Maybe there's, there should be another one on there, maybe.
Doesn't get anybody anywhere.
This election that we're talking about now, you'd be surprised how many people that don't pay attention to the instructions on just how to fill out a simple ballot with a yes or no question on it. You know, it's like fill in one circle and fill it in completely while you get X's and then they scribble it out. No, we're gonna do this one. So, you know, I mean, it's just like, oh my God, I just. I don't know.
I can't believe you have something negative to say about stuff like that. You know, about the budget, you know, maybe it's, you know, I wouldn't vote for something that was too high. You have more cars.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying I think if they go too high, I think like.
Only has a six cylinder in it, you know that?
I think based on the economy, I don't think it's the idea that it's too low. I think too high.
But you know, if they look at the number of the budget, that, that's one thing, but look at the, the, the important part is the mill rate increase, because that's, that's what's hitting you in the wall. You know, I mean, and at one point one four, I mean, the average house of, I don't know, two hundred and fifty thousand, whatever it was, was like nineteen dollars a month. I mean, I think most people can afford that. You know, there's obviously elderly people that are still living in their houses, have very small pensions that may be a problem for. But I don't see nineteen dollars a month as a huge issue.
Well, you know.
How much do you think you can cut?
That's the thing we talked about the other day. I mean, they stopped it. Okay, let's look at this from an analytical perspective. If they're gonna cut money out of the budget, how much money is that gonna save people per month? You, do you take a hundred thousand dollars out? Or what does that give you? Two bucks? You take two hundred thousand dollars out? What do you take out of it?
You know. Yeah, you know that, uh, that one mill is, give or take is around a million dollars, right? So at one point one four, as it sits right now, in the neighborhood of, Mary Beth can straighten me out on this, it's like point six, I think, is in there because the state shorted us money for the education stuff. So we, we have to make that up. Now you, it leaves you point five, a point five or so, point six to trim out of there. So you're gonna trim what? A half a million dollars? What, what does that, what does that equate to at the end of the day on the budget? That's all you have to work with. You, you can't get a zero budget because there is that part in there that has to be funded.
And I think that's what people didn't look at. I mean, you know, if you're gonna cut out four or five million dollars, then, then you're. I'm just saying.
The bigger, the bigger cities.
If they're gonna cut that much out, that would be a sizable amount to people's pocket.
You're talking two or three mills at that. That's a lot.
But when you're cutting such a small.
Air increases isn't even that high to begin with, so.
It's probably costing us more fricking money to go back in and have to do the re-vote again.
Sure, it's, you know, to, to run an election is between four and five thousand dollars.
So to run this back again and all the people.
Yeah, it was close, yep.
I, I don't know. I don't think, I think it was just people pissed off.
Oh, yeah.
So speaking about that, we have another clip, you know, and this is Sean McKenna talking about, um, the budget. And the impending, uh, Board of Finance meeting, which is tonight. So this is what Mr. McKenna had to say last night.
The Board of Finance, as we all know, is meeting tomorrow night. Um, we have not made any permanent decisions because they would come forward to you. Um, I think before we have a meaningful discussion on any potential adjustments to the budget, we see tomorrow night as the importance of getting some kind of figure, um, which I, uh, entrust that the Board of Finance will do. And then, um, my understanding is it does not have to go to town meeting. It goes strictly to a referendum. Um, and I'm hoping that the good taxpayers of Griswold forward a budget for us that's acceptable to them. And then we would come forward to the Board of Education to see what that would look like, how we would, you know, uh, present the adjustments. I'm happy, the team is happy to answer any questions that, uh, board members have. But I, I do think, in my humble opinion, it's a little premature to talk about what specifically adjustments would look like.
That's, uh, Sean McKenna from the Board of Education meeting last night. And I, I think he's right. I mean, he said, you know, how can we have quote unquote meaningful conversations at this point? We don't know what the Board of Finance is gonna do.
Right.
As of right yet. And that is tonight. I mean, he references it as being tomorrow night, but that was last night.
Yeah. I mean, what are they gonna do? Good question.
We don't know. So that's, that's, that's gonna be the thing. Either way, uh, the other thing, um, Sean McKenna said is that, he said, you know, we'll get, we'll get through this stuff and, uh, we'll be fine and we'll do great things that we.
I mean, they're not gonna cut the budget out completely. So there's still gonna be money coming in. It may not be to the full extent of what it is, but they're not gonna cut that much out. I don't think so.
I don't know. I don't know what they're gonna do. I mean, you know, I think, um, Mary Beth makes a good point, you know, said, you know, who, who puts, you know, more into the budget? Sean McKenna did say last night that, uh, through a conversation with other superintendents in the area, you know, the thought is, is that it's too much. And that, you know, residents want to see less, you know, in that budget, more so than having a question saying, do we want more money in there or less?
Well, I think that's the problem. It's the economy this year. Next year, if we have a good economy, people say throw more in. Yeah. But you know, I still think, I still think what.
So it's a sign of the times.
Yeah. And I think still what happened was, I think a lot of the parents of the school students, a lot of them probably didn't show up. Cause they do get a lot of support from people who support the school and those would be the parents of the students. My guess is a lot of them probably didn't show up.
I will say that because I worked the election, that there was a lot of older people. I mean, I won't, not elderly, but you know, older people that I would probably tend to say don't have kids in the school system. That voted. What, you know, what did they do? I don't know. I mean, there was, there was a fair amount of, of younger people. Some of them came in with their kids, you know, I mean, but, um, yeah, it's hard, hard to say, you know, I don't know. I don't know what happened.
Uh, I, I, I did, uh, reach out to Scott Davis about coming in tomorrow. Um, I have not an answer from Mr. Davis. So we'll be on tomorrow, you know, we'll, we'll talk about, uh, the meeting and a few other handy, handy things, of course, and I'll figure something out to piss people off generally do.
That'd be interesting. It's gonna be interesting to see what they're gonna go. I, I mean, I don't want, I wouldn't want to be in there.
Well, Board of Finance, all, all they do is give a dollar amount, I think, to the Board of Education and let them figure out what they can, they can cut, right? This is what we need to cut, I mean.
Yeah, but how do they figure out what the hell a dollar amount is?
Well, that's.
Well, they have to go through the budget. What, you know, we, that's, you know, before we go, I mean, one of the things Kathy Wosling suggested is to have like, uh, a single sheet.
Summary.
A summary that could be, you know, that could be distributed to residents could be, because full budget, if somebody can get very confused, it's hard.
Twenty, forty pages or something like that?
But if you look at the end of it, you know, there's that page, but if they just posted something like that, I think that, I, I thought that was a really good idea. And people at a glance. See where the money's going, where it's not.
I mean, just as a guess, if the Board of Finance comes back and says to the Board of Education, listen, you need to cut two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the Board of Finance, I mean, the Board of Education takes that and starts working with it. In the grand scheme of things, the thirty-three point something million dollars, guess what? It's still thirty-three point something million dollars. Because everything past that point side, that, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars isn't even gonna touch it. It's not gonna make a difference. The, the education budget's still gonna hang in at thirty-three point something million dollars. There's not enough there to cut out of it to make a difference. I mean, it, it really isn't. And what's, what's, what's that? A quarter of a mil? I mean, it's not much.
And, and to go along with the possible like adding the question back of is the budget too much, too little or whatever the, you know what? Everybody's gonna have their own. Opinion, exactly. And.
There's a lot to think about.
If it was in there ten years ago and then somebody made the decision to take it out, there must have been a reason why they took it out.
Yeah, I don't know.
Court Kenny, good morning, Courtland. It's good to see you. Uh, thanks for hanging out with us this morning. He goes, and this is very, this is very, very true. And this is very true in many facets of not just government, but in business as well. Don't make assumptions on what people can or cannot afford unless you walk in their shoes.
There was no assumptions made. It's just a general statement that it's how the world is today. Some people are better off than others and that's, this is where it shows up is that at a budget referendum at a, this is how it shows up. People know what they can afford and can't afford.
And, uh, Mary Beth said any cut would be positions. So we'll have to wait and see. So, uh, I mean, uh, is, is the meeting gonna be streamed tonight?
It usually is.
Usually, yeah.
If you don't want to watch that, Sea Unicorns live on SNSN.
The owl will be there, I'm sure.
So yeah, yeah. So the Board of Finance is tonight. And, uh, that's an important one. Your firsthand of what's going down. So Rich, thank you very much, Paul. Thanks for not knowing about the new, the, uh, New Britain Bees.
I used to call it a Britain. Was that what they always been called? What's the name before that?
The Rock Cats.
Was it? Oh, yeah. I bet that they're a stadium.
Anyway, we'll be back tomorrow right here on SNSN.